Good evening and thank you all for joining us for our Bible study here at Powerhouse Ministries. Those that are present in seat and those that are on the live stream, we thank you. We pray that everyone feels blessed today, everyone's had a good day. We're gonna go before the throne of grace before we start the lesson, so. Pray with me because I also need prayer, so pray with me for me and for one another. Father God, we come to you Lord first saying thank you Lord, thanking you for allowing us to see another day Lord. Thank you for health and strength in our bodies. Thank you for keeping our family and our friends God from hurt, harm, danger, seen and unseen Lord. God, we thank you for every blessing Lord, we thank you that you continue to keep us God, that you continue to keep us uplifted. God Lord, we thank you for the fellowship amongst one another God, help us to remember to encourage and pray for one another Lord. But we ask that the lesson that we read tonight be a blessing unto us Lord, that it would help us to grow spiritually and be even more the closer to you God Lord. And also to help us to be more obedient Lord, to do what you would have us to do Lord. God, we thank you for each and every person God, and we thank you for the blessing of this word that's gonna meditate in our hearts God. And help us to be even better Christians Lord. But we ask you bless those that had a mind to be here God, but for whatever reason they couldn't be Lord, we ask you bless our pastor Lord. God, we ask you bless every leader of this congregation Lord, that you continue to walk with them and keep them safe. Lord, and that you continue to build them up so that they can do the work that you have set for them Lord. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Alright, so today's lesson is reasons for going to church. So I think that this is a very appropriate lesson for the time. You know, as the Bible says that there will be a great falling away from Christ. And unfortunately, I think we are living in that time, so. We need to be encouraged that what we are currently doing is the correct thing and to encourage others to come to church. Alright, so we got some background reading. We got 2 Chronicles 2, 3 through 7, Acts 15, 4 through 6, 1 Corinthians 11, 17, and 20, right? Is I'm reading that right? And 1 Corinthians 14 and 23, Philammon 1 and 2, chapter 1 verse 2, Ezra 5, 8 through 17, and Hebrews 10, 23 through 25. Now go ahead and if everyone will work on getting the scriptures so that we can read through and I will read the central verse as we're doing so. So the central verse says, "I was glad when they said unto me, let us go into the house of the Lord." Psalms 122, 1, that's the King James Version. New Living Translation says, "I was glad when they said to me, let us go into the house of the Lord." Alrighty. 2 Chronicles 2, 3 through 7.
So Saul Solomon and all the congregation with him went to the high place that was at Gideon. For there was the tabernacle of the congregation of God, which Moses, the servant of the Lord, had made in the wilderness. But the ark of God had David brought up from Jethah's rim.
Are you reading chapter 2 verse 3?
And Solomon sent to Hiram, the king of Tyra, saying, "As thou didst deal with David my father, and didst send him seeders to build him house to dwell therein, even so deal with me. Behold, I build a house to the name of the Lord my God, to dedicate it to him, and to burn before him sweet incense, and for the continual showbread for the burnt offerings morning and evening, on the Sabbath, and on the new moons, and on the Solomon feast of the Lord our God. This is an ordinance forever to Israel. And the house which I build is great, for great is our God above all gods. But who is able to build him a house, seeing the heaven, and the heaven of heavens cannot contain him? Who am I then, that I should build him a house save only to burn sacrifice before him? Send me now therefore a man cunning to work in gold, and in silver, and in brass, and in iron, and purple, and crimson, and blue, and that can skill to grave with the cunning men that are with me in Judah and in Jerusalem, whom David my father did provide."
So anyone is welcome to comment on the scripture. So we know that David had desired to build a temple for the Lord, but God said no. God said, "No, you won't build it, your son will build it." And so this is when Solomon is talking about building the temple. And we take for granted now that we can pretty much just like walk into Home Depot or Menards or whatever and get what we need to do whatever project we feel like doing, but that wasn't the case during this time. Like it took some work to get those things. And so it just shows his dedication to building a beautiful temple to God, to want to honor God with the best of the best. Which is what God asks of us, that's why he asked for us to give him his first, so that we can give him the best of the best. So it's talking about his house, the house that we see as his house of dwelling. That Solomon said, "I gotta give God everything that I can, and I gotta find somebody that can do it correctly." Like I can go get Bob down the street that can just throw it up and make it look like anything, but I want somebody that's going to make it look beautiful to honor God. Even though God is bigger than this temple that we're building, like this is just a symbolic place for us to worship. God is bigger than that, I wanna do it to the best of my ability to honor God the best that I can. Anyone else have anything related to that scripture?
He, in one of those, I think it was in verse. Let me go back, cuz I just moved ahead real quick. But I think it was in 7 that he was saying a man had to be skilled. He wanted somebody that was skilled in that area, and that's kinda what he wants for us. You know, we already have gifts that he's given us. And when we come, like I was thinking that this guy was skilled enough to use his gift, and that's what he wanted. But also I know when we come, cuz it talked about reasons for going to church. When we go to church, we have certain gifts, and he wants us to utilize those gifts. And the church, learning the word and whatever, is gonna train us and give us a little more experience, you know, in those gifts. It'll tell us, you know, the Spirit is gonna lead and guide us. So my, I don't know if I'm thinking right, but I'm just like, this man has a gift, and he wanted him to use that gift. And if we, sometimes we don't think we have gifts. We come in here cuz we came broken, crying about something, but we carry a gifts. And when we come in, you know, the more we come, the more we learn. And God uses us, and sometimes we don't even think that we have it. I don't know if I was thinking right, but that's where my mind was going with that.
God gives us, whatever we're not equipped, He'll give it to us. I mean, He takes the weak, make them strong. So whatever it is you're lacking, you have to have faith and confidence that God will supply whatever it is we need to accomplish, what we're trying to accomplish.
And to put it that the temporal he did the best to build, the best wood, cedar and all that. So it's virtually God desire or best worship.
Yeah, as mother was talking, it made me think, you know, all things to the glory of God. And then it's the scripture that talks about how when we go to work, we're not going to work to honor, you know, our boss or the company that we work for, all those things should be done to glorify and edify God. So the skilled man, that's saying like, bring what you already have and give it to God the best you can. So you know, we have some people that have a desire to sing, and they think because, you know, some of, some, not me, but some of us stand up there and sing, you know, like are really super talented, like, well, I can't do that. Well, you know, the Bible says little is made much in the hands of God. So if you come with a true spirit of wanting to give God, like this is what I got. Like, yeah, I sing in the bathroom and I can carry a tune, you know what I'm saying? I can carry at least the tune, but God, I'm gonna give that to you. And then all of a sudden, that person that was shying in the background and was barely singing, now you're in front and you're leading the song, you're bringing songs to the praise team, because you allow God to cultivate what you had and make it even better.
I like your, the way you said that, because we noticed everybody, all of you guys stepping up and doing way more than what you used to. But we noticed that about ourselves too, that the confidence came when we came in here. And God, we felt more worthy than what we did when we first come in. Cuz sometimes we don't feel like we're worth anything when we hit that door. And when we get in here, we have a camaraderie, a fellowship, a friends, and people that, you know, encourage us. And so it starts building us up. And then, and when I say reason for going to church, that's one of the reasons we need in my head right now is we need to be built up.
Something else too, when I first started going to church, I remember I went up here to Mount Olive. And the girl was in there singing. She was singing so loud and off key, and it was like, I wanted to put my hands over my ears. And then I, when I left the church, I was talking about how bad she sung. And then as time passed, I realized that it didn't matter how I perceived it, cuz she was giving all she had to God. So when we give everything that we have to God, and you have a relationship with God, and you're aligned with Him and His word, you don't have to worry, she was not ashamed to scream to the top of her voice. And so I learned from that, that same girl, she's still in the church, and she still sings like that, and she don't care how you feel about it. She's singing to God.
Amen, amen. Alright, Acts 15, 4 through 6.
Acts 15, 4 through 6. When they came to Jerusalem, they were welcomed by the church and the apostles and the leaders and elders, to whom they reported everything God had done through them. Then some of the believers who belonged to the party of the Pharisees stood up and said, "The Gentiles must be circumcised and required to keep the law of Moses." The apostles and elders met to consider this question.
Anyone?
Okay, when I was studying this one, of course, I studied out of the Amplified and its everyday life Bible. It, to me, it was like. Oh, how did I turn that page, Jesus? I need to go back to where I was at now. Acts, I'm way over here, let me go back, I'm sorry.
So we're here in the New Testament, and it's talking about, you know, like-minded people coming together, and they're greeting each other, you know, hi brother, hi sister. Glad to see you, as we do when we see each other in the church. And then you got the Pharisees who hold on to the old law, you know? The way that it was before Jesus came, before the new covenant was made, and it's like, well, you gotta be circumcised. And instead of them arguing with the Pharisee as a body, they came together and said, "Let's look at this, let's talk about that." So that's something that we also do in the church, where we come together, we talk about issues facing families, facing the community, facing the world. And we encourage each other, and we pray about it, we try to provide resources for one another. Should that be what we are standing in need of at that time? So gathering is important because you, mother might have something, Mother Adams has something that I don't have, has information that I don't have, has a perspective that maybe I don't have, you know what I'm saying? She's been studying scripture and talking to God, and maybe God has revealed something to her. And then when we're able to come together, she can then share that with us, and then as a body, we can apply it as we're supposed to.
And they were putting a burden up on those other people. They weren't like, God, I mean, they were making them do stuff that they didn't have. Jesus didn't come to do that for them, he didn't come to burden them. So you know, they were putting a burden upon the Gentiles.
And that's like how I thought about how it is today, certain ones, like you have to do something before you can convert to something else. You know, and that's what they were saying, well, before you convert to our religion, then you need to do this. And like you said, they was putting burdens on people that Jesus already came and paid that for, you know? And so that's something that we have to be careful where we are in the church when someone comes that may not be of the same faith or the same culture, and not be like, oh, in order for you to be over here, then you can't wear your this or that, you know? And that's something that, you know, we really have to be mindful of.
Another thing it drawn out was, you know, like we are, we're in, we're in transformation, all of us are. We're being changed, we're being grown spiritually. And God does not want dissension within the church. So that's why I see when Barnabas and Paul came back, and they found out that they were arguing over whether the Gentiles should be circumcised like the Jew. And they wanted to impose their law upon the people who had just come in as new Christians, which caused a lot of dissension among each other, because see, the Pharisees were learned people. They were, they knew the law in and out, but it's not about the law. It's about coming together, you know, different people, all kinds of different people. And everybody doesn't think alike, and everybody doesn't do alike. But if we have good intentions, good heart, God sees our heart, and He sees what we're trying, we're trying to serve Him the best that we. So why would I put a stumbling block to keep you from coming to Him? You know, just because I'm following a rule, a law. And so it's like the stop sign up here. If I'm, I see the stop sign up here, and I cut a main artery, this stop sign, I'm gonna go right through this stop sign to get myself to the hospital. Because we're just trying to get it right. And I just know that this is going way beyond all what we're studying. But when you don't do the right thing, we're learning, we're in the process of learning. But when we repent and ask God to forgive us for things that we have done in our past that comes to our remembrance, then we should get to start, restart, restart, restart on this journey.
Right, and stumbling blocks look like a lot of things, you know what I'm saying? Like even like you just said, when sometimes our past can be a stumbling block, not because God has caused it to be, but because we don't know how to let it go, we don't know how to forgive ourselves. Even though God is, if we repented, we meant it with our whole heart, and we have tried to now live differently, God has not only forgiven but forgotten, and we're holding on to it, and it's becoming a stumbling block for us. And sometimes other people, like in this situation, you know, the Pharisees were causing a stumble block. But sometimes it's old friends, you know, you run into somebody, and now you're not the same person. They can see it, you know what I'm saying? They see that you're not the same person, but they allow the enemy to use them and remind you of who you used to be and what you used to do. But then again, that's where we can stand firm on the word of God, that he said he forgives us. And so if he forgave us, who am I to hold on to it? Who am I to persecute myself, you know? So just reminded, well, you know, just as God changed me, he can change you, and I'm gonna continue to pray for you, you know? You can't get caught in that back and forth, even trying to defend your new life, you can't do that. You're just like, you just say, you know, by the grace of God, it's because I, you know, I found out who my Savior was, and how much he loves me, and that he has purpose for me, and I wanna live out that purpose. So that's where I'm at right now, you know? And I pray that you get there, and I pray that when you get there, our roads cross again, so that we can celebrate together.
I wanna say one more thing, because we've been living broken so long, we don't know how it feels to be not broken. So it's like, I'm just talking about myself. I've been living broken so long, whenever somebody, I had a friend come over, and she said a cuss word, and she put her hand over her mouth. And I was like, where'd that come from? I mean, you know, and I was wanting to let her know, you know, I still curse every now and then, and the Lord told me, quit tearing yourself down so you'll fit in, because when he separates you from the world. Yeah, when he separates you from the world, other people can see it. And she let me know that she saw it, and I didn't know that she saw it, till she let me know she saw it.
And that's some of the, you know, to circle back around to the topic of the lesson, that's, that's some, that's part of the benefit of coming to church, you know? We can read and study and worship in our own homes, you know what I'm saying? That is, that is a proven fact, we can indeed do that. But when we come here, you get things that you don't necessarily get just on your own, you know what I'm saying? You get, you know, we've seen it here, we all have listened to the same scripture, same Bible verses sitting here. And everybody has had a different perspective, different input. And so therefore, all of us have now gained something different that we didn't get when we initially read this scripture. You know, because not only is God revealing things to us different, but because we've all lived different lives and had different, it speaks to us each differently a little bit. And so now Sharon shared her interpretation, and Mother Adams has shared hers, and Mother Betty. And now I'm like, oh, okay, I didn't even see that when I read it, you know? When I, I didn't, I didn't get that, but you know, now that I'm amongst like-minded saints, and we're reading this together, I'm getting something new. And so even those that don't come to Bible study or watch on the live stream, when they come in on Sunday, and the praise team is singing songs, and the scripture is being read, and then the word is spoken, those are deposits in their spirit that they now get to take out of there, take out with them, that, you know, may encourage them throughout the week, may be a word that they were supposed to give to somebody else. And had they not come to church, they wouldn't have got that, they would have missed that, they would have missed that addition to their spiritual growth. And also the encouragement, like, you know, we would, I know, I can speak for myself. I know like when I was really out there, and we were partying and doing all the things that, you know, we thought we were big enough to do, you know, we were bold enough to do, you know, what other people thought was important. You know, what other people said was important, and they weren't even feeding into your spirit positively. They were feeding into your spirit, but they weren't doing it positively. And we crave to be around those people. Girl, what you doing? We going out this weekend, you coming over to the house, and we playing cards? Like, we crave to be around those people, and we set up situations where we can spend time with them. We need to do the same thing with our spiritual brothers and sisters, because those are the people that are gonna help us grow, help us be strong, help us when we stumble, help us when we don't know what to do. Because we take, we always look at, I can't say we, I'm just speaking for myself, cuz I can only speak for me. We, I sometimes think, well, I don't wanna tell them that, I don't want them to know that about me, you know? What are they gonna think, you know? But if I am truly associating with people who truly love the Lord, who truly are pursuing a relationship, they're gonna encourage me, they're gonna say, yeah, you may be going through that right now, but you know, I went through A, B, and C, and this is how God brought me through, here's some scriptures I know that can encourage you. Why don't you give me a call in the morning, we can start praying with one another? We don't do those things enough, and so then sometimes we feel spiritually depleted. We feel mentally and emotionally tired, and it comes out physically, and I'm just speaking cuz that's where I am right now, I'm physically tired. But it's because we don't seek the right type of relationships. We still want to be, we want to come to church, and we wanna have the benefits of coming to church, and the. Uh, we still want to be, um, we want to come to church, and we wanna have the benefits of coming to church and the, I don't know, the status of coming to church, but then we don't cultivate those relationships outside. So it's literally in this building, like I see you on Sunday, hey, or Saturday, or whatever the case may be, you know? Um, if we're having a weekly service, I see you, and then move on. Don't think about you when I'm going through something, don't think, or if I do, I can't share that, that's embarrassing. I don't want them to know that I had that slip, that fall, um, that I made that decision, that I said that thing, that I did that thing, what are they gonna think of me? Wrong mindset. Mother, can you pray for me? Because I feel like I'm, I'm, I'm drifting away, and I don't wanna do that. I feel like there are people that are trying to get between me and God, and I need you to, I need you to pray my strength, that I'm strong enough to tell these people, no, you can't be a part of my life right now, I love you because you are a child of God, that makes you my brother, that makes you my sister, so I do love you, and I will continue to pray for you, but our relationship, we can't have that right now, because I'm not strong enough to stand on the word and to stand on what God has told me to do, so I have to distance myself from you. And then I need to be clinging to the people like, wait a minute, like, she got something, I see it, I feel it when I'm with her, uh, he got something, I can, let me, let me, hey, brother, how you doing? Um, you know, uh, I was rea- uh, who, who comes to my mind all the time is Elder Palmer. He'll talk about how, like, when he was first really reading the Bible, like, he would bug his daddy, he would bug pastor, like, hey, I was reading the scripture and I didn't quite understand, I didn't quite understand, but we will do that with almost anything else that we have an interest in, that we wanna be part of, we'll do that. We will reach out and we will find people to teach us, to mentor us, but we don't do that in the church. We don't, so then we have people that come in here that attend, um, but never really grow, never really, um, have, had the relate, the potential is there. They just need someone to help encourage them, to help push them, to say, hey, why don't you come to Bible study this week? You know, maybe you don't come every week, can you come once a month, you know? Um, just to get them that, that extra contact with us and more, more of the word in them. Sorry, I went on a tangent.
Because he tells us we need to fellowship, and we need that, we need one another, we're all members of Christ, and you need your other member. Um, and that's the point of learning and being, and learning to be transparent and not being, because I know for myself, sometimes it is hard to just come up and say, oh, I done done this, I need you to pray, and then when someone asks you to pray, or me, myself, stop asking people to pray, but be specific of what I want you to pray for, like, I just need you to pray. No, I don't want you to pray for no job, I need you to pray for this particular thing. And that's the thing of just being able to be more bold and confident, and I'm not the best, and I may not be where I need to be, and I need your help, and just being able to say that, that allows other people who couldn't say it or scared like you was to just, um, to open up and say, there is someone else like me, I'm not by myself, and so that's the main thing that, um, I really get out of the fellowshipping of the church, of the, just being able to be around, like you said, you need to be able to have members and sisters and brothers that you can call on, on any time, you know? And that's what your family is supposed to be in your church.
And, um, in the lesson, it talks about how the church is a hospital. Imagine going to the hospital, you're sick, right? What are they gonna ask you when you get to the hospital? What's going on? What's your symptoms? Can you imagine saying, I don't know, just, just take care, just give me some medicine, just take care of me? They can't specifically treat what, what it is that you need, so that's, like you were saying, you can't just be vague and, oh, I just need you to pray for me. Well, unless, unless the Holy Spirit tells me what it is that you need me to pray for, which absolutely capable of happening, but you wouldn't, like I said, you wouldn't go into the hospital. I'll give you an example, last night at work, I had a young man come up and he said, um, I think I'm breaking out in hives. And I said, okay, and he said, can you tell me what I'm allergic to? No, I cannot. How would I know what, what you're allergic to? So then I start asking questions like, are you eating anything new? Is this your first time working in a food production plant? Are you, have you touched new things that you haven't touched before? Did you do, have you had new laundry detergent maybe that you didn't? So now we're, we're, now we're diving into what's going on. So the same thing has to happen here, you've got to tell, if you're at requesting prayer, um, requesting scriptures from someone, you gotta tell them what you need it for, like, I'm not saying you gotta stand up in front of the whole congregation and tell them, if the Lord led you, um, to go talk to Mother Brenda, then that means she's gonna hold your confidence, like, the Lord would not have led you there, um, to get what you needed, um, for her not to hold your confidence. Now, should she do that, that's between her and God. She's gotta answer to God for that, okay? But you did what you were supposed to, to do, and you got what you needed, because you did what you were supposed to do. So the, the church is more than just a building where we come, sit, um, on Sundays, it's, it's, it's a resource, it's, um, our main purpose, yes, of course, is to worship and give God praise, um, and to, to have others come to know the God that we serve and, and build a relationship with it. But it's also a place for us to build community amongst one, one another, so that when we stand in need, we have people that we can lean and depend on. Um, so that when we, when we need something, we have someone we can go to and ask, can you help me? Anything else? Sorry. All right, First Corinthians eleven seventeen.
Now in this that I declare unto you, I praise you not, that ye come together for the better, but for the worse. For the first, for first of all, when ye come together in the church, I hear that there be divisions among you, and I partly believe it, for there must be also cares, sees among you, that there, that they which are approved may be made manifest among you. When you come-
Yeah, it was, uh, eleven seventeen and, and then verse twenty.
When you come together, therefore, in one place, this is not to eat, the Lord's supper.
So, um, these, these scriptures are talking about, um, meeting under the guise of we're meeting to, um, worship and honor God, but, um, because we're not doing things correctly and in order, and because we're not coming with the right mindset, and because we're fighting amongst each other, it's not serving the purpose that we have set forth for it to per, to serve, you know? Um, so in this, in this particular scripture, they're talking about, um, the sacrament of doing the honoring the Lord's supper, and it's saying, but you guys, you're not doing it right, you know, you're, you're arguing, uh, there's dissension among the ranks, um, and so how is God being, being pleased and honored, um, by this basically tradition that you're doing, so, so you're doing the physical acts, but the, the heart and mind part aren't aligned with what you're doing physically. And so even, so if you listen when we're, uh, when we're doing, um, the Lord's supper on first Sundays and they're reading scripture, scripture talks about, you know, be careful that when you are, um, doing this, that you're doing it with the right heart and mind, or basically you're, you're eating, drinking damnation unto yourself, because you're not doing it, um, to honor God, you're doing it because it's tradition, this is just what we do, you know, kinda like the going back, kinda like the Pharisee saying, oh, you have to be circumcised, um, but if you're not, if you're not, um, aligned with God and even have understanding why you're doing what you're doing, then you're doing it purposely. You know, anybody can walk in off the street that's never ever heard of, um, Jesus and his sacrifice of, and his sacrifices, why we, um, do sacrament on first Sunday, and walk up here and take it and be like, oh, thanks, that was a nice snack, you know? Um, but it's through learning and understanding, and then not just the, the mental, uh, the, the intellectual knowledge, but the spiritual knowledge as well, realizing that I am doing this because God made a way for me to be able to be forgiven, because they, all the burnt offerings and all the sacrifices that they did in the Old, Old Testament, yes, they did it because that's what they were taught they were supposed to do, but there was still, there was still unforgiveness, like, if, if they died, they still went to hell. Um, that did not erase their sins, that, so that's what Jesus did, so then Jesus came, and he was the living sacrifice, and he died for our sins, and so forgiveness is real. So when, um, we are forgiven, then, okay, Lord, we're clean and we can, we can do this. Or it is our intention, Lord, to lay down those things that are unclean, and so through this, through this ceremony that we're doing, we're saying, Lord, I'm giving away the old me and I want your new blood to wash me. I want the bread of life to be, to the, to be the lifeblood of me, um, Lord, through you. Um, so these people were just like, oh, we were told to do it, you know, it's the law, so that's what we do, um, without the spiritual component of it. Um, so we know through teaching that that's why we do, um, Last Supper. I couldn't think, my brain went blank.
What I got from it, I did some research on this, and, and Paul was admonishing the people uh, who were, they were, uh, they were not honoring the Lord's supper. They were, uh, what they were doing, they was treated like any other, other supper, and then they, and they was eating and drinking, the rich people, and then they was down in the poor people, because they ain't have what they had. And Paul says, no, that's not, the Lord's supper is a sacrament, it's sacred, it's set apart. And if you don't have the understanding of what the Lord's supper is, see, we do things, my people, we, my people, what is it, my people perish for lack of knowledge, when you don't know, then you do the wrong thing. So he was telling them, this is not what you do, the Lord's sup- supper is for you, if I have a problem with my neighbor, my friend, my, with others, I have to go to them and make that straight before I can take the Lord's supper, because, uh, and then whatever you're doing, you, you're asking for forgiveness, and I won't do this again, Lord, do you really mean it? And then when you take the Lord's supper, it's, it's, it's a sacred thing, it's set apart. Because if you do it wrong, then you're, you're raining down judgment on yourself. It's, it's really a self-examination of where you are before you take the Lord's supper, and if you ain't right, you don't need to be taking the Lord's supper, because it is for real, this, it's not no joke.
Paul was also admonishing them that you can bring damnation on yourself, you can make yourself sick. I remember, um, my grandfather always say, and him and his wife, he said, he's, he's in a jail, you don't need to go to that table, you don't need to go to that Lord's supper table today, because you didn't ask, you didn't, um, give Miss Maybell pardon. You, they had the corn flicking all over the, and I know when I used to be taking the Lord's supper, sometimes I never used to go to church, if I know in my heart I was in right, or I sinned or do something, so, because if you don't go to the table, people suspect, well, why shouldn't I take the Lord's supper? So, if, if I know I didn't do right, I'll recall, I, I say, you know, I go to church.
Yeah, and so that's just where we get educated, you know what I'm saying? Um, the more we come to church, the more we see it happen, the more we ask questions. Excuse me, I don't, like, I think that this is probably the best place to ask questions, if you don't understand something, um, we don't wanna just fall into the, this is tradition, so this is why we do it, um, without understanding, uh, without full, um, knowledge of what our hearts should look like when we come to do that, what should be on our mind, you know? Um, like, uh, Mother Betty, Betty said, if I've got, um, art with Sharon, we need to fix that before either one of us come and, um, take the Lord's supper, we need to say, you know, hey, sis, you know, this is what's going on, also the word says, if she and I can't agree, if we can't come to understand, then we bring in a third party and say, this is what's going on, um, so that we can, we can make peace with the situation. Yeah, that's what Paul said, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and so I, I think that because we don't always do those things, sometime, we, we, we allow the enemy to get a foothold in our lives, we get, allow the enemy to get a foothold in the church, because we're not, we're not following the things that we're supposed to, as far as making sure that we're okay. Like, how can we encourage someone else to come into, into the body of Christ and, and join us? And all they see us doing is bickering and fighting and arguing and backbiting on one another and, uh, uh, I'm just gonna use Larissa as an example, because I love her and I think she knows that, um, mm, did y'all, y'all see Larissa on Sunday? She really thought she was doing some, wh- why, why? Like, what she was doing was to honor God, why are you standing in judgment of this person? And if you thought what they did was incorrect, that's when you pull that person to the side and say, hey, A, B, or C, whatever happened, it didn't, it didn't sit well with me, it made me feel some, a, a certain way about it. And that might just be you, that might just be your pers- perspective, that person may have not done anything wrong, but because you feel that way, you've gotta express it, because if not, then what happens? Bitterness sets in.
Bitterness, immensity. And you know, what Paul really meant, and he said, you bring in the, the, uh, third person, it's not for you to bring in that person as to say, well, they wronged it. When I say for me, when I bring in the next person, I want the next person to say, this way you went wrong, Mother Adams, this, that's, because if you trying to settle something, if you trying to bring peace, you, I don't know, but if things isn't right, it's, you, you can't pray good, because the Bible said too, if you have an order against somebody, you bring it, because you go reconcile and then come to the altar. You ain't bringing that next person just to say, well, this would happen or to condemn somebody. You bring in that next person and say, this is it, to draw the line and say, mother, this way you, you, you shouldn't do this. Um, Sister Charlie, Sister, you should do this, and then we all go together on our merry way, that's the pass. Yeah, that's, that's, that's what Paul, yeah, that's the word.
And the word says, you know, on this specific topic that we're talking about around, the word says, like, how can you love me that you've never seen and hate your brother? And, and, like, uh, Elder Palmer said, Sunday, you know, there's two, there, when, when Jesus came and the new covenant was made, there was two, two, two new lo- two laws that covered everything. Love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, all your mind, love your neighbor as yourself. So how can I hate you and be following the law of God? How can I have spitefulness and bitterness towards you and be following the word? I can't. I keep, I, I am lying to myself. Right.
Can I say something? You made me lose my train of thought. But I, I know that this part you talking about, how can I love my neighbor when they done me wrong? And, uh, I waited to for my father, I waited, he died on his deathbed, and I was waiting for apology. But the way he treated me, he never gave it to me, I, he died with it, and I had to, I had to take the hit. And I was like, well, uh, you know, and then this, this love your neighbor as yourself, I found out through, uh, Sunday School, that love is not the world's definition of love. It's not a feeling, emotion, it's a conscious, active decision. I choose to love you, okay? I choose to love you, you don't have to love me back, but I have to keep myself in alignment with God. I can't be worried about what you doing and how you treat me, and that is a, I done wrestle with that this weekend. I can't worry about what you do to Betty, I have to worry about what, how I treat you. And so it's just, it's you, you and the, and your relationship, and, and it's a hard rope. It's a big pill to swallow.
It's very challenging, that's what is so, but it is so, um, God is so merciful and graceful, and I love it in the word where he says, you know, um, no weapon shall prosper, no weapon this one shall prosper. And so it's not saying that we're not gonna have problems, we're not gonna have, you know, we're gonna have these people talking about you're mistreating you, whatever, but it won't prosper. If you're still alive to say I love you, if you still walking and surviving, that's prosper, you're prospering. And that was something that I had, you know, even myself to look at, it's like, mm, if you really, you said this wasn't gonna happen, this, now I done this and gave this up and it's supposed to be eaten, no, it's not. You know, because then you have, you know, different ones looking and seeing who you really are, and it's how you respond, is how they really know Jesus, that you really have, that you, you really have what you're proclaiming to have, you know? And like you said, the ones that mistreat you the worst- And like you said, the ones that mistreat you the worst, how you respond to them is what's going to affect them. And, um, I was talking with my husband about this, God's not gonna ask me what you did. He's gonna ask me, what did I do? So through everything that we may go through or whatever you go through with your, in. Particularly, I mean, we was talking about marriages, but whatever you, he's not gonna ask about your husband or your kids. Well, he's gonna ask, what did you do? Cause regardless of if your husband or your kid or whatever act right, you still got to act right. So that is a challenge, you know, something that, you know, I can witness to and been apart and challenging now going through. But it's always, you know, that's why you have the fellowship of your sisters, of your brothers too. But that's why you have, but you go to the season. So if I do, you know, if I have a question or a misunderstanding or something. And I say, um, say something to Charlize and I'm like, I'm gonna pray about it if I felt like she doesn't. Because it may not have been, but it may have been my feelings, you know? It may just been the way that I was feeling that it had nothing to do with her. And that's one thing in the, uh, with your fellowship, you can say, look. I need to say something, but it has nothing to do with you. But this is what I felt when you did this. But this is the way I feel. And that's the communication. And that's the beauty of having a fellowship. Is being able to communicate with one another. It's like you say, get every, different opinions. Cause sitting at home, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna see that.
You're just gonna be sitting in your own mind or, or that friend, cause this is what we do, okay? Something happens, something happens, and we, the spirit convicts us. We know, we were not supposed to do that. Now, am I gonna call Mother Adams and say, I did A, B, and C? And she's gonna say, well, you know, the word said. No, I'mma call my best friend and be like, girl. And she gonna, she's gonna affirm everything that I feel. So then I'm sitting here justified, feeling right in my feelings, and I'm not. And I knew that I wasn't. That's why I didn't call the person that was gonna call me out. So as I, we sitting thing, you know, I was thinking, um, you know, we are the body of Christ and, you know, we talk about all the time about how the body has different functions. But in this body, I can guarantee you that what you're going through, someone else has gone through it. Okay, um, and they, and if they are no longer going through it, cause as we know, God wants us to learn lessons. And if we cannot learn it, you gonna keep circling that same block over and over and over and over again. But, um, if you have someone in the body that's been through it and you see that they're no longer going through it. That's because they allow God to bring them out. That's the person you need to be talking to. Say, uh, and, and that also comes to us sharing our testimonies with one another because then we have no idea. You know what I'm saying? Like, no one would know the things that I've been through if I don't share my testimony. If I don't share with you, and not so that we can sit together and be like, woe is me. No, so I can tell you like, yes, I went through it. But as, as you know, we say, I don't look like what I've been through. You wouldn't know. You wouldn't know the things that I've been through. You wouldn't know because I, I have the joy of the Lord. I have the peace of the Lord. But that's because I sought it, you know, um, because other people prayed for me, because I let them in and let them know what was going on. Um, so sharing your testimony with your brothers and sisters is important and you're not gonna get that sitting at home.
And that's what the world really is looking for, is that authentication of you just being a real, you know, a lot of people are not looking. I know for myself, was not looking for someone that's all put together. That's, you know, you came with the silver spoon, you went to, you raised in the church, you, you've never done nothing wrong, you know? I like to listen to the stories and to relate, a relatable person, you know? That you can be like, okay, so what did you do? Because when you're out there and you're struggling, it's not good. You're not ready to hear it to go to John five and five. I need to know, did you get up and drink some coffee? Did you go exercise? Did you meditate? You know, authenticity and be real with it. Because if I'm not at the place that I can read John three and five, then it's just a book to me. It's not gonna be applied. So maybe if we give, like you said, give the testimony and say, you know what? Get your mind relaxed. Let's do this. Let's meditate, pray. Think on this and pray about it and do this. Then come back, but yeah, now you can go to John and then, then that'd be something beneficial to that person.
Um, let's see, first Corinthians fourteen and twenty-three.
So if the whole church comes together and everyone speaks in tongues and the choir or unbelievers come in. Will they not say that you are out of your mind?
So that, uh, I worked at a nursing home and one of the activities that we were doing this particular week was we were doing like a movie marathon. And they were showing, um, a Tyler Perry, Tyler, Tyler Perry movie. I cannot speak. Uh, and one of my, uh, units that I was over was like a, like a mixed unit, but a lot of mental health things going on. And so I come over during the time that they were showing a movie, showing the Tyler Perry movie. There happened to be a scene where they were in church and they were. You know, they were praying and everybody was shouting. And I went sat next to this particular resident. And I will never forget, she always had something interesting to say, but she turned and looked at me, she said, you one of them holy rollers, ain't you? And I just laughed and I said, yes, ma'am, you know, but as someone who grew up at the church, that's not abnormal to me, you know what I'm saying? It's not abnormal for people to talk to the pastor while he's preaching. It's not abnormal for people to raise their hand, cry, run. What, whatever, however, the, the spirit so moves them to praise God. That's not strange. But then I talk to people who don't necessarily, um, express the same way that, that we do. And they're just like, it's just weird, you know, that, that I always get that. It's just weird. Why, like, I don't understand why you guys have to do all that. Like, I don't, I don't, and, uh. Uh, right, you don't know what I've been through. And we, we're, you know, a, a pastor says that too, like. You, like, people will lose their minds over sports teams. These, these sports players over celebrities, like people will stalk celebrities, like drop their whole lives and follow celebrities all over the place. These people don't care anything about you. Don't know you exist. You can't give a hand raise to the God that created the universe that you live in. Who looked down into time thousands of years and saw you and said, hmm, I have purpose for that person. You know what I'm saying? I'm gonna create that person specifically for this need. And we wanna, and, and when, when we're in the house of God or when we're in the presence of God, we wanna sit there like. Who is it time yet, but we'll wa- be out in the cold at a football game for hours and not caring nothing about what time it is. Priorities are mixed up. You know, we wanna worship people. And not the Creator, you know? Don't get me wrong. I'm not necessarily a Chiefs fan, but I appreciate, you know, their talent and what they've done, you know? Pat Mahomes, Travis Kelsey, I know who those people are. However, I am not going to hurt myself trying to get to them. You know what I'm saying? I'm not gonna not pay my bills to go to a football game where. Cause I looked at Chiefs tickets recently, where I'm paying three hundred dollars and I'm still in the nose we section. I ain't got no chance to them even seeing me. But I come to church and I'm guilty, so I can speak on this. I'm stepping all over my own toes. I'll come to church and be like, ooh, twenty dollars. You want me to give how much? But I. Look, I'm stepping on my own toes. I'm, I'm not doing it. I'm not saying this to, to make anybody else feel convicted. This is the Holy Spirit convicting me, you know? Um, we'll shell out money for everything. All the kids wanna go to the movies. Oh, I want a DoorDash four or five times a week. But I don't wanna give God ten dollars.
That's what the pastor said. He said, all the twenty dollar bills, fifty dollar bills, hundred dollar bills go to the food store, the gas station. And the one dollar bills come to church. The one dollar bills, yeah, cause when you get the offering, you all you see, dollar, dollar, dollar. But all the fifty, a hundred in the food store.
Which if that was your, if that's your only dollar, praise God. You gave the best that you had, but we sitting on our best.
No.
We sitting on our, we, look, I, I, talking for myself. Okay, so I got paid today. Hmm, I wanna do A, B, and C. Hasn't even crossed my mind, like, I need to pay God first. Because it's because of him that I have a job, that I have the physical ab- ability to get up and go through this job. That it's adequate to meet the needs that I have to pay the bills, to feed the kids, like. But, Will.
When I get paid, I have a list. My ties is the top offering bills and whoever I'm gonna bless. I, we gotta, I could say for me, it was a point where I get paid and I just go short. And whatever leave I take to church or for the offering, you know, we have a good prayer meeting, some prayer meeting you give offering. But as you sit in Bible study, Sunday school or, um, in the, in the church, in the midst of people, the word come. Something got to prick you and say, hey, hold on, like you say priority or we gotta say, hold on. God comes first. He gave me the strength to go work on this job. Let's take my tires and offering. That's, that's twice. I know it's a time, I was the one tired myself and all kind alone. Sometimes when I pay my tires and offering, sometimes I used to say, but I can't pay no tires. The woman say, no, you can pay your tires. I said, well, when I take out this and pay this and pay that, he said, that's what you gotta bring, you sub, um, bring yourself on the subjection. You gotta know. You cannot type all your money with bank loans and credit cards and all of that. And then when time, then you get paid, well, I wouldn't be able to pay no tires this Sunday. I'm gonna pay it next Sunday. I had to break out of that and definitely, trust me, you might, it might not be the abundance. But trust me, when you pay your tires and offering, you be nice to people. God, you will see, God, it always come with money, you know, your children. Your children, you will see them do well in school. You see them be healed or somebody you pray for. The blessings comes in so many different ways. And when we do these things, don't even be focused on, well, God, I paid this. Don't look for, however you choose to bless me, Lord. I don't mind. And you know what is important. And my thing is, I always pray more than people. Because you find some people are there hurting more than me. So there are times you've gotta put others ahead of you. This is what the Bible talk about when you make the sacrifice. We have to know the sacrifice and make, yes, sometimes. I do believe, I mean, I used to say, I don't believe in giving telethoys, but I do believe there's a time come, you giving telethoys. When I said hoys, because I know like when I had to buy, I used to buy lunch before I went to hotel, cause now when you go to the hotel, got a cafeteria. I didn't have no lunch money budget over the week because somebody else need groceries to feed their children. The children need to go to school. When you make those sacrifices, God will come back and like, cast a prayer upon the water. And it shall return to you many days. And I would, Reese is a perfect example. When she came over here, oh. In a strange land, among strange people, go and work and move for her. And because who she was, who she was so recent, I know one time, honestly, I, she went, this would be the voice that she hear me say. What did the church bless over the fifty dollars? Royanne Reese, you know, she used to bless you every month. We went to this prayer meeting this night, the, the month, she say, ah. All those have a fifty dollar bill come, I saw Reese, I said, Jesus, Reese put the fifty dollars in it. She always was good at that.
Yeah.
She always was, and that's, I see the blessings upon her now, her children. She always, she never taught us. I say, oh, Jesus. But I saw that I had, I say, okay, let me go put mine. It's no shame. But you know, we can really have to make the sacrifice. And not only even money, you know? Sometimes somebody may call you, they may be going through or they need prayers and you sleepy. I know but that. Early two AM, three AM and you, somebody hurt, I know this girl who was suffering from cancer. Oh my God, oh my God. And Sister Ruth who was here, all the baby hours, but you gotta make that, can't say. Girl, I'm sleepy, I pray for you tomorrow. You don't know, that person will be passing over chili John and dying. You don't know what blessing you could bring to that person or the words you can say. And I proved that many times. So it's not only money. There are many ways we need to sacrifice for others.
And those are things that we won't necessarily, you know, so the Bible teaches about tithing, you know? But you need a better understanding, you know? So that's why we come, again, that's why we come to church. We're taught. Like, uh, Mother Betty said, was talking about learning that love's not a feeling, it's not an emotion, it's a consciousness. She learned that in Sunday school. Everything that the world tells you about love, it's a feeling, it's an emotion, it fades, it comes, it goes. You know, um, today I love my husband, but I don't love him no more, so I'mma go get a new one. That's not how love works. That's not, because, and, and we should know that from the love of God, from how much we don't do what he wants us to do. What he has given us instruction to do, um, what he has given the Holy Spirit to guide us to do, and he still loves us anyway. So if it was based on feeling emotion and merit, what we do, we already failed. That we, we not gonna make it. God's love is already gone. We didn't already, but that's not what it is. God decide, he, he made us. He made mankind and he's like, I love this creature that I created. Even though when he created, he already knew, he knew the fall was gonna come. He knew all, all the things that we were gonna do throughout time. God already had that knowledge and said, but I love them. I love them anyway. And, and I want, I, I'm going to create man and I'm gonna create, uh, Mother Betty and Mother Adams and Mother Brenda. And Mother Sharon, right? Shirley, ooh, plus Sharon. You know, he's gonna create all of us and, and love us anyway despite our trips, our falls, our conscious decisions to not do what is right. Cause it's not always a oops, oops, I accidentally, we, sometimes it's intentional, like, hmm, I know I'm not supposed to do this. But I like how it makes me feel. Or I like the benefit that I'm gonna get from it. So I'm gonna do it anyway. Despite God specifically giving me instruction to not do this, I'm gonna do it anyway. And then when we trip, fall, the first thing we would be like, daddy, I'm, and he's like, but, right, he's like, but I told you. Not to do it in the first place. But we learn those things. We learn those things through, um, coming to. Coming to service, coming to Bible study, coming to pastoral teaching, um, going forward in like our small women's groups. We'll, we'll learn those things, um, and become stronger in why should I do this? Cause sometimes we don't understand the why. And that affects us, like, and sometimes we gotta do it even, even when we don't know the why. But like tithing, as we were talking about tithing, there is a why. And we learn that in church. We learn that it's not even, it's not. A monetary thing. It's a sacrifice, you know what I'm saying? Because we all know that we need money to survive, you know? Municipal utilities is not gonna keep your lights on if you do not pay them. Like, it's just not gonna happen. So we know that we need physical money. Um, and because it is a need that we have, because we are willing to get, to give it to God. Not grumbling, not calculating how we gonna get it back. Not wishing we didn't have to give it in the first place, not side eyeing somebody else, like, I know you ain't give it. That's not your business. It's not your business if they giving ten percent or not. It's not your business if they giving fifty percent. That's between them and God. You just do what you're supposed to do. You bring your goods to the storehouse for the Lord. And that's why, like, you know, I, I would have never known, I would have never known tithing had I never come, had I never come to church. I'd have been like. Them people are crazy. They give my money to church. Cause when I was younger, I, I, I can remember, um, having a heart, like, okay, I'm going to, and I got discouraged listening to other people. Like, uh, was working like one of my first summer jobs. I believe I was babysitting. Okay, and so I got, so I've been going to church, you know, my mama been taking me to church. I've been learning about you supposed to tithe. So I tell my cousin and my brother, I'mma tithe. What I do, that's stupid. What are you gonna give them your money for? Like, they didn't work, they didn't do, they didn't. And I'm just like, oh, I thought that's what I was supposed to do. Like, I'm pretty sure that's what they told me in church that I'm supposed, that I'm supposed to pay tithe. So it, like, I, I did go ahead, but that, that struggle, I'm not gonna, I'm being transparent, I continue with that struggle. Okay? But, but intellectually and spiritually, I know the benefit of it, you know? And so, um, even in conversations with my mom, I'm like, mom, she's like, if you feel like you cannot give ten percent. Give God what you feel like you can give him and he'll work out the rest. He'll get you to the point where you don't even think about it, you just give it. He was like, she's like, but start with something. Start sacrificing something to the Lord. And I was like, okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I I um, that's something that a lot of people can can understand, cause we all understand money and we understand how it works. Um, and as times are progressing and things are costing more and it's like. But that's why God's like, but if you trust me. If you trust me, you might, you know what I'm saying, you might be left with just this. But I'll make it stretch and do, and you'll have surplus. She'll be like, now, wait a minute. Now, I know I only had a thousand dollars. I put a hundred dollars in church. And I still had nine hundred dollars worth of bills. How do I still have money and all my bills are paid? Where these groceries come from? Because I wasn't even figuring it to the budget. Like, wh- wh- how are we still eating and and nobody's going without? Right, right. We do, but that's that, that's that, that, that's that fleshly side of ourselves that says, you know, uh, cause. I've I've given myself all the arguments. Well, God don't need your money. God, God made everything. God, you know, he, you know, he's got a cattle on. You know, we'll we'll use the scripture. He's got a cow cattle on Thousand Hills. He don't need my money. But it's not about the money. It's not, it's about, do I love God enough to obey what he's told me to do and do, and does my love carry over into trusting him? Because he's proven himself time and time again. So why am I doubting that he's gonna do? Why am I holding on to this physical thing? Um, when, you know, my daddy can do it all. He can, he can take care of all of it. Okay, we're moving real slow. Yep, we did four to Philammon one and two, so we can.
If therefore the whole church be be come together unto one, into one place. And all speak with tongues and there come in those that are unlearned or unbelievers, will they not say that you are mad? Is that the one I'm supposed to be reading?
I think you're reading first Chronicles. We need Phila- uh, Philammon one and two.
Okay. Philammon one and two, and to our beloved Sophia. Acridus, Acridus, our fellow soldier, and to the church in thy house. But back in the day, they used to have house churches. They didn't have buildings like we have today. So that's where they came together to worship the Lord.
Yeah, they had houses and they had tents, which is why Solomon was trying to build. That's why Solomon was building the temple, so they had a set um place to worship. But the word says we're two or three year gathered together, so I don't want us to just get focused on being in this building. Like, church can happen at home. It can happen in the middle of the grocery store if you got the right two or three, the right two or three people.
Right, and church is just a structure.
Yeah, yeah.
A place that you come, but churches, churches literally just a me- a measure. It's important, it's the who, not the what.
Yeah, yeah, because in all actuality, yes, this building is uh. Holy ground, you know, we be, uh, but it's holy ground because of the intention that we come in here with. Because the the spirit that we're supposed to bring the spirit of God here with us or invited to meet us here. Uh, so this is just uh kinda like our bodies. It's just a vessel. It's just a vessel for us to use um to come together to worship, but God is not contained in this building. All right. Ezra five eight through seventeen. Um, the king should um should know that we went to the district of Judah. Uh, to the temple of the great God. The people are building it with large stones and placing the timbers in the walls. The work is being carried out with diligence and is making rapid progression under the direction. We questioned the others and asked them, who authorized you to rebuild this temple and to finish it? We also asked them their names so that we could write down uh the names of their leaders uh for your information. This is the answer they gave us. We are the servants of the God of heaven and earth, and we are rebuilding the temple. That was built many years ago, one that a great king of Israel built and finished. But because our ancestors angered the God of heaven, he gave them into the hands of Nebuchadnezzar, the child and king of Babylon. Who destroyed this temple and deported the people to Babylon. However, in the first year, uh Cyrus, king of Babylon, King Cyrus issued a decree, a decree to rebuild this house of God. He even removed from the temple of Babylon the gold and silver articles of the house of God. Which Nebuchadnezzar had taken from the temple in Jerusalem and brought to the temple in Babylon. Then King Cyrus gave them to a man named uh Sh- Shasbazar. Um, whom he had appointed governor, and he said to them. Take these articles and go and deposit them in the temple in Jerusalem and rebuild the house of God on its site. So this uh Shasbazar came and laid the foundations of the house of God in Jerusalem. From that day to the present, it has been under construction, but it's not yet finished. Now, if it pleases the king, let a search be made in the royal archives of Babylon to see if King Cyrus. Did in fact issue a decree to rebuild this house of God in Jerusalem, and then let the ki- king send us his decision in this, in this matter. So basically, they were being questioned like, uh. Why y'all rebuilding the temple and who said you could do it? And I know that you told me and you gave me information, but now I need you to go back and find the actual document that says. The the king said you could do this. But it just talks about um reclaiming the things that have been taken from uh the the temple in Jerusalem and bringing them, bringing it back. Um, to honor God. Anybody have anything related?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm. This was prophesized like two hundred years ago. Jeremiah and Isaiah prophesied, King Cyrus was gonna, uh, he was gonna give permission. For uh the temple to be rebuilt. So I was like, how did that happen? I mean, God knows everything. It was like, woo, it went way back. He knew before then, that's how he know who we are before we're born. He knows everything about us before we set foot on this earth. That is amazing.
Right, amen. And and it's shown all throughout the Old Testament, like as you read throughout the the Old Testament, like it is constantly talking about um the Messiah coming. It's constantly talking about the things that were gonna happen to him, how he was going to be persecuted, how he's gonna be um uh crucified. This is all before he even existed, be- you know what I'm saying? Before the line had even made it to Jesus. They're already talking about, well, you know, somebody's coming. And so all throughout the Old Testament, you see where um. Somebody prophesies something and it's many, 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 many years before it um comes to pass. Uh, but that's just God showing that I know everything. Um, so while you're worried about this. I've already made a plan for it. You know, I made a plan for it two thousand years ago before you were ever born.
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Nebuchadnezzar, he appointed Nebuchadnezzar to tear him down, and then he appointed Cyrus to build him up. And all that was for a purpose. And I was like, wow, that's just amazing.
But as we like to talk about the Israelites, like, you know, it it was a. Talking about turning the same corner because you not learning, learned of the lesson. Like, that's what they kept doing. They they kept doing that, like. Like, talking about beating your head on a brick wall, like, like literally, God would, um, they would get into a situation. God would bring them out. And for a generation or two, they would follow the ways of the Lord. And then the next generation would come along and they would forget, they would forget the things that they were taught or the laws that they were supposed to follow. So then we fall back into captivity and then the Lord brings us out again, that like, they just kept, they just kept doing it over and over again, which is. Something that we do as well. We do it, we're we're guilty. But you know, um, I would take from the scripture, like, it is our responsibility uh to keep the temple of the Lord built up. It's our responsibility um to make sure that it's the best that it can be. Right, that's not only this physical building, it's this physical body, amen. Amen, cause we are a temple. Our bodies are a temple unto the Lord, and so um what we do with it is is important as well. Hebrews ten twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
Let us hold unsobrally to the hope we profess, for he who promises is faithful. And let us consider how we may spur one another on toward love and good deeds. Not giving up, meeting together together as some are in the habit of doing, but encouraging one another. And all the more as you see the day approaching.
So, we should, we're responsible for encouraging each other. Like, I don't know why that analogy just popped in my head, but we are kind of, we're we're um. We're a spiritual support group, you know, where we ha- we have, you know, you got like Alcoholics Anonymous, Eating Anonymous, or. We are a spiritual support group. We should be looking at, how can I encourage my brother and sister to continue in their walk? Um, even though they're facing hard times right now, uh, that's when the Lord deposits somebody in your spirit that you don't necessarily even. Outside of church, talk to all the time, that you're supposed to pray for that person. And then if the Holy Spirit then guides you. To reach out to that person to say, hey, do you need some help? But again, that's following the utterance of the Holy Spirit, because that's not always the case. It may not always be for you to reach out for that person. You are maybe just supposed to pray for them. Or um sometimes when somebody drops in my spirit, I'll call my mom. And I'll say, hey, mom, will you pray with me? This person um fell on my heart for whatever reason. Um, and I just want us to, even though we can't, we're not physically together, I want us to touch and agree. Over this person, whatever it is that's going on, that that the Holy Spirit has led us, led me to pray for. So this, this is a meeting place for people who trust in the Lord, believe in the Lord, or are striving. To trust in the Lord and believe in the Lord, and this, this should be a place where they get encouragement to continue, um, continue that. That behavior, continue trying to change their lives so that they can live according to how God would. This should not be a place of discouragement. This should not be a place of judgment, um, because they can already get that out in the world, and that's sometimes. That's sometimes how people fall away from the church, because they come to the church expecting something different. They're they're expecting to feel that love. They're expecting to feel that acceptance, that warmth. And sometimes with the um scripture, uh, the lesson touches on a little bit, sometimes we tend to be quickish in the church. And um, oh, I don't know her. She's new. I'm not gonna speak to her. Instead of going and greeting that individual and saying, welcome to Powerhouse. Do you know anybody here? Oh, you don't? Would you like to sit with me? Um, do you have a Bible? Oh, you don't have a Bible? Let me get a Bible for you. You know, um. Just a warmth, like they, there should be such a warmth when people walk in that they're just like, this is what I've been missing. You know, this is the the, this is part of the emptiness that I've been feeling, because what, for whatever it um. Reason out in the world, I'm not getting love like this. I I had fallout with my family and now I'm, now I'm by myself and I don't have anybody to encourage me. We have no idea what people walk in here carrying. Um, and like I said, like the lesson says, and like we've said many, many times, this is supposed to be a hospital, you know. You would not accept care from a hospital when you walk in and you're bleeding, like bleeding, blood is coming out and the nurse walks right past you. Doesn't attempt in any way to stop the bleeding, figure out what happened. Um, get you pain medicines so you be co- comfortable, just ignored you bleeding on the floor right there. You would never go back to that hospital. You wouldn't encourage anybody to go to that hospital. He'd be like, girl, they ain't gonna take care of you. Don't go there. Go on up the road too, to the university or go to, go, you know, and and which is sad. Because we have a hospital right here, and I'm talking about the church. That's what I mean. Um, so people should not have to run anywhere else. This should be where they run to get what they need, um, both physically and spiritually, God.
I forgot what I was gonna say, cause you said so much, but what, one thing that did pop up was when you said that people go through stuff. And then somebody else comes in and they, you know, they might notice that you went through it or heard you say something. And they're watching or whatever, and they need to know how to go through, so they come to you and then they ask you. And I I can't remember what I was thinking, cause you said so much and I just lost my whole train of thought, but. It was like, I mean, if if you are struggling. We we do need to let people know what we struggled with and how we overcame. That was something that I was gonna say, because a lot of times we don't tell, we don't wanna tell, you know, and. We just have a problem with sharing those things with people.
And sometimes, um, as pastors like to say, the unchurched, they have the perception that we have it all together.
And it's not good to share everything with everybody, so.
It's not. Again, that's why we lean depending on the Holy Spirit to lead and guide us. Um, but, uh.
And that is true, that's one thing I said earlier this week. I was saying some things we have to keep to ourselves. You know, it's not a secret, but we had, I made a post earlier, some things just has to be discreet. Because as you're going through something, you don't need the opposition because it's still fragile. So it could break exactly what you're trying to go through or why you're striving to do, to get to this next level. By you running your mouth could end up doing you more harm than good.
Yeah.
So sometimes you do have to be discreet, but that's where you come in and you can fellowship with others. Like I said, that's the most important thing of. Coming into the church is being in the fellowship and um being with like-minded individuals that are striving, because none of us is there.
Right.
You know, and so like it was telling in the scripture, you know, not to be judgmental when someone does come in. Be, and I, for me myself, it's easy to say it and you can be friends with everybody on Facebook. But in person, it's like maybe a hi and just walk on and not, but to be more out there and to be more open. And say, you know, how you doing? You know, let's grab lunch or something, because just the fellowship of knowing, and I shared it once before with Ella Nixon. I've grew up around her all my life, and I always thought she was this mean lady, always, until we had a fellowship dinner. Out and we sat at the same table and we talked, we talked after the fellowship dinner, all through, I mean, had a lot of things to come and was really developed a friendship. But, and it's like, if that never would have happened, for the next fifty years, I still would have been thinking she was just, oh, a mean woman. You know, but and that's how it is different. That's what the fellowship is, and being able to share different stories. And talk to each other and show the level, God, you know.
So, couple things while you were talking made me think, um, so isolation is the trick of the enemy. And so, get you alone in your own thoughts and in your own feelings, and like we talked about before, then you justify how you feel. Then you're mad at everybody else because nobody, nobody knows that you're lonely, you know what I'm saying? Nobody's checking on you, nobody's. I'm speaking from what I've experienced, um, and and you're coming to church and you're like, mm, they don't even care about me. The enemy, I'm trying to. Right, well, get you, like, I don't even know why I go to that church. And then you stop going to church. Now, some people can, because I've seen it. I've seen people stop, stop, that went to church. Regularly participated and they stopped going, but it didn't stop their relationship with God. They continue to have relationship, they continue to pray, they continue. To be a blessing to other people, um, but that's because they were spiritually mature, um, and they had a strong foundation. If that is not the case, you cannot allow the enemy to isolate you. Because what's gonna happen is you're gonna fall back into old habits. You're gonna fall back into old friend groups because, well, they care about me, they love me. Sure they do, cause you're out here doing the same things they're doing. Y'all are all on the same road to hell together, so, yeah. You know, who who wants, don't nobody wanna go by it, nobody wants to go anywhere by themselves, if we're being honest, you know. Short of maybe the bathroom, but other than that, we don't wanna go nowhere by by ourselves, you know, you you don't necessarily wanna. Cause you like having that camaraderie, you like having somebody to talk to, somebody, um, so trust and believe, those people that are happily on the road to hell. Don't wanna go by theirselves. They they want you to go as well. So we can't allow the enemy to trick us into isolation. Um, we need the church, we need one another, we need that encouragement, even more so going forward. Um, in the current times that we live in, we have to build those relationships. We have to become um ingrained and intertwined in the church, um, and not just to come and sit. Like, it's fine to come sit, get the message, but be involved, um, because that's the only way relationships are. Are gonna develop, you know, if you're a person that always go, that goes to work, just comes to work, do your, does your job and you leave. You don't have a relationship with any of your coworkers. That's go, that's the same thing here. If you just come to church. I'm gonna use myself. If I come to church, sing a praise team, sit in in the congregation during uh. During the message and then go home. I have nothing. I'm not gonna feel comfortable calling anybody when I'm going through anything, cause I haven't built any relationship with anyone. So it's im- important to, um, for us, as the people that are um, in the church, in leadership, in roles, whatever it may be, to be friendly, to present our, present ourselves friendly to visitors, to people who maybe come but don't necessarily participate. Um, because we'll draw them, we'll draw them in to uh, being part of women's group, being part of coming to Bible study, um, being part of the youth department, being part of praise team. We'll draw them by our love, cause that's how God draws us. So that, it's important that not only do we come to this physical building of the church, but we cultivate the church that we are. So that when people who don't know God see us, they see God in us, and then we can draw them, because that's our job. That, that is our, that's the assignment that Christ left us when he left. Go out into the highways and byways and bring the people. So it's fine what we do in this building, not knocking it, we absolutely need it. We need it to be spiritually built up. We need it to have that fellowship with one another, but it's also our job to take what we get here and to take it out there. Um, so that other people get to know God, and then we can say, hey, find you a church home. It doesn't necessarily have to be Powerhouse. Would I love for you to come and worship and uh, with our, with our congregation? Absolutely. But the goal is for you to go worship with some congregation. The goal is for you to, to um, get to know God, to, to build a closer relationship through those other relationships, through the word that you're getting every, every week from the pulpit, through the Bible study. That is our goal. Yes, it would be great for every seat in this building to be filled up, but I'm okay as long as you go sit in somebody's seat that's preaching the word of God. So we didn't actually read the lesson, but we touched all over it. So I'm gonna ask you guys, um, to read the lesson, cause we're at our time. Um, but I'm going to read the conclusion. Cause I, it was probably the part that I liked the best when I was reading it. Go to church anyway, for every believer has a past and every sinner has a future. If you are having sex before marriage, go to church anyway. If you are a drug addict trying to beat addiction, go to church anyway. If you went out to the club on Saturday night and got drunk and stayed out most of the night, get up and go to church anyway. If you're having identity problems, not knowing if you wanna be a man or a woman, go to church anyway. If you have a habit that you can't break, go to church anyway. If you are living with someone and can't turn that man or woman loose, go to church anyway. The church is a hospital for the broken, the lost, the empty, the oppressed, the confused, the desperate, the indebted, and the rejected. God can take hold of a person and make something beautiful of their life. Amen.
God builds a broken pieces.
Amen. Amen. Mother Adams, will you pray us out?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your word this evening. God, and as we continue to study your word, we pray that we would apply it daily to our life living. We pray that each and every one of us, as we leave this place, you will go with us, keep us, guide us, protect us. We thank you for the covering that you have over us, the hedge that you have around us. And Lord, we thank you for every family member this evening, those that are here, those that are online, and those that are out there. We plead the blood of Jesus over them, and we thank you for salvation, deliverance, restoration. Lord of every time, we need revivalists now. Our spirits, our souls, our hearts need to be revived. Oh, Lord, revive us again. Send revival, Lord. We thank you, God, for the pastor of this ministry, God, the one that you call and ordained. And we thank you for all, those, God, that take a part in the teaching. We speak, Lord, God, to every situation in their lives, and everyone that is sick, we plead the blood of Jesus over them. We speak the wine healing in the mighty name of Jesus, and thank you, God, for the students. As they went to school that day, God continued to keep them and guide them. I plead the blood of Jesus over them. And I pray, God, that you would protect them, God, and I bind every, every gun, every weapon, God, from around them. In the teacher's Lord protection over them. Oh, we thank you this evening, God. We praise you, and we bless and praise your holy name for everyone in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.